Let us all rise, His Excellency President. Let's put our hands together. Please, you can take your seats. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to this evening's town hall. I did invite all of you so that we can have a conversation about one of the most important subjects, probably the most important subject, and that is education. It's an important subject because all of you know that education is the equalizer that makes the children of every citizen from all communities, from all walks of life, coming from all backgrounds to be equal. Number two, education is important because as Kenya, our most important asset is our human capital. World over, you ask any international company, local and foreign, they will tell you that the Kenyan human capital is comparable to none. And number three is that education, because of its importance, we spend close to 29% of our budget on education. So it is the most important subject. All of you remember during the last election, there was a very big debate on two subjects. Number one, about CBC and where it was going. I remember in many instances, citizens were wondering what is going to happen to our children after grade six? What's going to happen next? What's the future of CBC? The other very important subject was the status of our universities. At that time, 23 out of our 40 public universities were technically bankrupt or insolvent because the government of Kenya had debts owed to universities, 135 or 38 billion shillings to public universities and about 51 billion shillings to private universities. And many of our universities could hardly pay salaries. In fact, some of them paid half their salaries. I even had a conversation with one of the vice chancellors, and he told me that they have never paid full salary for the last 13 years to lecturers. We had many suppliers who were not paid. In fact, for those who are doing engineering courses, courses in medicine that requires supplies for practicals and many other requirements, many of them could not afford. And what happened? It was beginning to affect the quality of our education. And you all know, because you are scholars, that there is a common saying that to destroy a nation, you don't have to use an atomic bomb or to use long-range missiles. All you need to do is to lower the quality of education and if, and if there is exam cheating, you will have destroyed a nation. Made of education professionals, people who had run schools and universities and colleges, people who had experience, and they took almost eight months. And I tasked them with sorting out the issues in our education sector. These great professionals, and I have every reason to believe they did a good job. They came up with recommendations on what to do with CBC, recommendations that we have implemented, and to a great extent, we now have an aligned competence-based education system. They also recommended what I needed to do in terms of pupil-teacher ratio. And it's the reason why I have hired 56,000 new teachers in the last two years, the largest in the history of Kenya. And it is also the reason why we are implementing the student-centered funding model that is aimed at sorting out the challenges that are in our universities. We are one year in. Last year, we admitted students using this model. And what this model has done is that we have taken the amount that we are funding our universities from an average of 45 billion shillings every year to 82 billion shillings every year. That is the quantum of additional resources we are making available, both for help, for scholarships that go to our universities. The biggest challenge that universities had was that they had inadequate funds because we promised, or government promised, that they would sponsor students, both loan and scholarship, up to 80%. But they didn't meet their end of the bargain. And we ended up with a big crisis. As I have told you, we ended up with debts of close to 180 billion shillings owed to our universities. As a result, universities could not teach the courses that they were offering to our students, and we ran the real risk of lowering the quality of our education. And as I have told you, you know what kind of a risk that poses to our nation. The new student-centered funding model has five bands. The bonding did not start with this fund, with this model. Everybody should know that. We all, we started the bonding in 1996. There has always been bonding. It didn't start with this model. I know there is a push that maybe this bonding started with this model. It did not. It's always been there. All we did is instead of having four, four bands, we made it five. And we have reasons for that. And I'll explain. Seven is a pressure. And I had a loan, just like you do. I paid my loan. My loan was 55,000. There was an award. I paid my loan facility with an interest, so I paid 69,000. In fact, I paid my loan when I got my first salary job as a member of parliament. So the loan component is not a new thing. It's what has always been there. It's what makes the model sustainable. What we have done is, and I want to put this in context. We have about 10,000 secondary schools, 3,500 secondary schools in mostly rural areas, informal settlements, marginalized areas. 3,500, they don't send a single child to university. Whole communities, whole villages don't have a single child they send to university. It is the reason that I decided to hire 55,000 teachers to send to these schools. It is the reason why this year we are going to build 1,800 laboratories in those schools because those schools, many of them don't have a single laboratory. Many of the students who do exam in Form 4, they meet first time a laboratory setting during the examination. That disturbs me a lot that we have close to a million and 200,000 children who go to school and they have no chance of going to university because of the school they attend. Let's put that aside. In the new funding model, about 12% of the students are in Band 1. Band 1 are straight children who are orphans, all of them without exception, go to Band 1. Children who are associated with disability, all of them go to Band 1. Children whose parents are on cash transfer because they are classified as vulnerable, all of them go to Band 1. And students whose parents earn below 6,000 shillings a month. All those students go to Band 1. And this Band 1, we changed it slightly. Everybody used to get 80% scholarship and loan. We decided that for these kids, we raise it, that we raise it to 95%. From 80 to 95%, they get loan and scholarship. 70% scholarship, 25% loan, and only 5% their parents pay. And that is roughly, maybe something below 5,000 shillings a semester. And it is because they truly need our help. Band 2 are the next, whose parents earn below 25,000 shillings. They get 90% loan and scholarship, 80% 90%, 80% loan, 80% scholarship, 70% 80% scholarship, sorry, and 10% loan, and their household pays 10%. Number three, they get 80% scholarship, 10% they pay loan, and 10% household they pay. These are the three most important because they affect the vulnerable. The others, Band 4 and Band 5, these are the people whose parents earn up to 70,000 are in Band 4. And in Band 5, the people whose parents earn beyond 70,000. So the assessments are being done by a means testing instrument. They are not an arbitrary figure. A means testing instrument that has been in operation since 1996. I don't know whether the people from High Education Loans Board are here. When did the means testing instrument come into? Is it 91 or 96? 90? 1996. That means testing instrument has been there since 1986. And it has parameters from a multi-agency approach. We have parameters from Kenya Revenue Authority. We have parameters from Kenya National Bureau of Statistics. We have parameters from NIMS, which is the education portal for registration of persons. We have statistics from our ecosystem that serves the registration of the vulnerable in the Ministry of Labour and many other variables that are put together. It is as objective as it can, and it keeps, we keep improving on it to make sure that it assesses our children correctly. There's been cases, legitimate cases, of some students who have been placed in the wrong band. And sometimes it's because of the information that has been supplied. And there is an opportunity for a parent or a student if they are bonded in a band that they don't think they belong. There is an appeals process. Last year, I think we got 9,000 or 10,000 appeals. This year, we've gotten how many appeals so far? How many appeals so far? 26,000 appeals have come in, and they are being processed. And they have undertaken that any appeal of the 100 and, how many, how many students applied? 134,000 students applied, 26,000 have appealed, and they are being processed. They've given me the award that the processing will take three weeks. And every parent or student will get their responses.
Yes, sir.
Especially if they have supplied information and corrected the information that's sometimes in the portal. Some of the time when students go to a cyber, and sometimes the cyber keys in information that's not correct, we end up with the wrong information. And sometimes we end up with students in the wrong band. But overall, it's a process that has been tested, it's a process that has worked, and we want to use it to take our education to the next level. Let me conclude so that I can take questions from, from you. Let me conclude by saying I have engaged stakeholders. I have had already three meetings with vice chancellors because I wanted to get feedback from them as to whether the model is working and whether the model is sustainable. In all the three meetings, the vice chancellors and the managers of our universities have confirmed to me that the model is working and that together, in fact, one vice chancellor told me when he, when he, when he told the people in his ecosystem, the model is working, he was told, yeah, it's working for the university because you can now afford to pay your suppliers and salaries, but it's not working for the student and the parent. But then I asked him, if it is working for the university, the university belongs to the students and the parents? Or at least, so I think. The other feedback that I have got from the vice chancellors is that we need to do more explaining. The students need to understand it. Their parents need to understand it. And that's part of the reason why I decided to have this town hall so that we can have a conversation. I've also engaged students in different fora. They've told me their concerns. They've told me about this loan. They don't want this loan. They want it to be a scholarship. And I told them the loan is part of what sustains this. If I didn't pay my loan, possibly you couldn't get a chance to learn. So everybody, it's, it's a continuous process. You, you, you pay today, you learn today, you pay tomorrow so that somebody else can learn the next day, and they pay, and we all, it's a relay of sorts. They have raised issues about some of the students that have been put in the wrong bands. And I have explained to them that these are issues that we can correct. So ladies and gentlemen, welcome to this town hall. I know I've taken a bit long. Welcome to this, to this town hall. I will I will be, I'll field questions. Please be as candid, as open, as possible. And there are no consequences for asking any question. So. Karibu.
Thank you very much, Your Excellency. And standing on the already established protocol, Your Excellency, my name is Evans Mosanga. I come from Chukua University. I'm a law student, I did it for the year. And, Your Excellency, thank you for laying the background. And, Your Excellency, we have seen the principle that you're coming from. But, Your Excellency, in the 5,300 students that Chukua University has called so far, there is a concern of loans and interest. Your Excellency, loans and interest are at the core of this particular model and are the core of the concern of these particular students. Your Excellency was just looking at the statistics just to be factual in nature. And I was seeing that by 23, 2023, we had around 120,000 defaulters. That's an estimate of 8.5 billion shillings due to these loans and interest. When I was looking at the statistics in the United States of America, we had a cash, a debt crisis of around 1.6 trillion US dollars and 48 million defaulters. So, Your Excellency, the point of concern is, can these loans be made as grants? That's number one, Your Excellency. And why isn't that the case? Because you've already said that you can't make them grants and you can't make them scholarships. So number two, Your Excellency, can we increase the grace period for the repayment of these particular loans? Or number three, Your Excellency, can we reduce the interest at which we pay these particular loans? Your Excellency, that's part of what we discussed in our small baraza, and we hope your indulgence, indulgence in that particular matter. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mosanga. Maybe I can take another two so that I can answer them. Do we take it from the same side or maybe we can try another side here?
Your Excellency, I'm Newton Kiplating Lagat, the president of Corporate University of Kenya. I've got one serious problem that it's really affecting the public universities diploma students. They've been denied scholarship. They've been denied HEF, that is, high education funds. And to add on that, they do not qualify for help. That means they are going to educate themselves when taking their diplomas. It does not end there. When they, they graduate from diploma, they transit to degree. For you to qualify for scholarship or HEF, you must have transited from high school or secondary school to a campus through coops. Diploma students are not in coops. They've already gone. So that means you've educated yourself in your diploma. You again going to educate yourself when taking your degree. The new funding model has not addressed that. Thank you.
Thank you. Maybe we can take one from this side? A lady for, for a change, maybe?
Thank you. Your Excellency, my name is Mogesi Maroa. I'm a Khonsan citizen, a youth leader from Kurya Migori County, and the president of Mount Kenya University Parkland Slow Campus. Your Excellency, you've said time and again that this new funding model is student-based. Well, my question is, why is it that students from private universities are only given, are only given loans as opposed to scholarships, just like it is in public universities, yet these students are all from taxpayers of this country? Thank you.
Final one from here.
Thank you so much, His Excellency. My name is Bonaya Rover from Kenya University, a sixth-year architect student, anticipating graduation in December. At the preamble of your speech, you began by noting that education is an equalizer. Therefore, I have two questions. One, if indeed education is an equalizer, how will this new funding model assist those persons with living with disability? Because we do believe disability is not inability. My second question goes to, I'm from Tana River County. So we are believed to be those that are, those that come from marginalized areas of this country. So you've spoken about cybers. In my local area, the next cyber, you normally travel close to about 46 kilometers. I believe you've been there. I'm an N'agani. So mine is to ask on these persons that live in marginalized areas if they will be able to access internet and all this connectivity for them to be able to be put along this new funding model. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Can I, maybe I should answer those questions first, maybe starting with Bonaya? Bonaya, first congratulations, sixth year is quite something, you know? And I wish you well. Students who live with disability, as I have said, in this model, we have actually said that those students living with disability, they automatically qualify for band one. They get 95% funding, both scholarship and loan. Eighty percent loan, fifteen percent scholarship. Help me, where is the PS? It is band one? Again, so that I don't?
Your Excellency, 95% government support, 70% scholarships and 25% loan.
Okay, 70% scholarship and 25% loan, correct. So those are the students and the parents only pay 5%. In the old model, they were paying 20% was the, was what was outlined. Secondly, you are aware that people living with severe disability, we have expanded the numbers of citizens who now qualify for cash transfer. We had 1.2 million citizens. We've now expanded that to 1.7 million citizens. We just recruited another half a million aged orphans and people living with disability for us to be able to look after the vulnerable. Because as a society, we have to look out for the people who are vulnerable, especially those who live with disability. Number two, you asked me about cyber. It is true. I was in Tana River actually about a month and a half ago. And I can confirm that the distances are far. But the good news is this. If you speak to your Member of Parliament, we have already agreed with them that they will set up an ICT hub in every ward in Kenya. We have changed the law. The CDF law that was used for just building schools, we changed the law. I signed the law into effect. And now we are using CDF to build an ICT hub in every ward for three reasons. Reason number one is to make sure that ICT infrastructure is available to citizens, including students. Number two is because we have a big program on digital jobs. And number three, we want to encourage digital commerce and we want government services to be available on that digital space and therefore citizens don't have to come to Nairobi or to go to other areas. They can access government services from those ICT hubs. So we have a plan around the ICT hubs. I got a brief yesterday. We are now delivering cyber, sorry, we are now delivering internet using Kenya power lines. It's easier. So every place where we will have a Kenya power line, it will be possible to access the internet. We have already rolled out that program. Mogesi Maroa, sorry if I get your number right. You have a very valid point that private universities have students whose parents are taxpayers. That's correct. Public universities are run using public funds. We sponsor as government of Kenya, public universities. Private universities have sponsors. They have foundations. They are run by people who have networks of raising funds either using foundations or other means, which sometimes as government we don't have. And because we value the fact that even those in private universities are also Kenyan students and their parents are taxpayers, that is why we haven't shut the door on them. We have said we are going to make public resources available to those students as loans, the same way we are making public resources as loans available to students in public universities. The only reason, Mogesi, why we in this model, we have said we cannot provide for scholarship is because in the past, we said we are going to give them scholarship. And because we didn't have the money, we didn't. And we put many of those private universities in a lot of trouble. In fact, one public university closed down because we took students to them. They trained the students. We owed them money. They couldn't pay their staff, they couldn't pay, they closed down. So it is better we keep our word. It is better for us to say, this is the much we can do, rather than for us to say we can do so much. Today, we have a debt of about 51 billion shillings owed to our private universities. It is a debt that we must pay, but it is unfair for us to continue to accumulate debt. It is better we tell them, for the moment, we cannot afford. But in the future, whenever situation improves, we can reconsider. My good friend, Mr. Lagat, you've made a case for diploma students that they don't qualify. And I think your question is diploma students who are studying in universities. The loans and provisions we have made are for students in our Tibet. And I will tell you where the difference is, you know? As a way of making sure that our Tibet function, when I was Minister for High Education, I found out that it was cheaper to go to university than to go to a Tibet institution. That was the case. Because we didn't consider properly Tibet. And it is one challenge I had to deal with. Because for a very long time, as a country, we considered Tibet as a place for students who have, who are failures, for lack of a better word. And that was a very wrong classification. And that is why when I became Minister for High Education, I brought a very big conversation. In fact, it was a very controversial conversation. I remember one vice chancellor of more university than Professor God saying that the minister is causing confusion because this Tibet thing is not the thing to do. But the reality is, whether you go to Germany, whether you go to Australia, many of their students go to Tibet institutions. There is a lot of value in us balancing our education between knowledge on one end and competence and skills on another end. And therefore, it is the reason why I pushed very hard. When I was minister in 2029, 2010, there were only maybe 20,000 students in our Tibet. I started the first 30 Tibet institutions. Today, I am very happy that we have 720,000 students in Tibet from 20,000. And we have made huge progress. And we have closed many skill gap, skills gap that existed. So I quite agree with you that we must not discriminate. It is the reason why in this funding model, we have enhanced scholarship and loans for our Tibet students. And also we have maintained their upkeep, just the same way we are doing for our universities. As for your case, when universities are being considered, they are being considered to provide university degrees. We were trying to discourage universities from also doubling up and doing diploma courses. Because there are many institutions now. We have close to 250 Tibet institutions that can offer diploma courses. But the saving grace is that if you are a diploma student and you join a university after your diploma, you join as a second year, I think, you qualify for Higher Education Loans Board from there. And those are the instructions that we have given to the Higher Education Loans Board. Can we have a confirmation from you, gentlemen, that that is the case? I want you to answer that, gentlemen.
That is the case, Your Excellency. They are funded like any other student. When they join the university for degrees.
Finally, Evans, my good friend Evans Mushanga. Your issue is that the loans and the default. You know, the loan issue is not, as I told you earlier, it's not a new phenomenon. All of us, I can tell you, any student who has gone through university, unless their parents paid the full fee, they have a loan. And I don't think there is any crime in having a loan. And I don't think there is any crime if you have a loan and you genuinely don't have the money to pay for it. I am agreeable that we must look into the subject of a grace period, especially to consider that no student should be asked to pay until they have a job. I am agreeable to that. Because you can't ask a person who is tampering to pay. Because I mean, you'd just be asking the impossible. I didn't pay myself until I got a job. Nobody followed me. Maybe these people are a lot more aggressive nowadays. So I think the position should be until we are sure of an income. And we have many ways of finding out an income. Whether they are doing a good business, we can collect a lot of information from CAREA and all the other agencies, Kenya National Bureau of Statistics. And I will encourage those of us who took a loan from the university, if you can afford to pay, please let us pay. It's the honorable thing to do so that the next bunch of kids can also access university education. On the interest, the interest is calculated by a curious scientist. It is not meant for government to make money. It is just meant for it to be sustainable. That by the time you're paying, if you had been given five shillings, it is still five shillings that you pay. I don't know whether that is the correct position. Again, Higher Education Loans Board, you are the people who calculate the interest. Can we lower the interest or you want us to take it up?
Your Excellency, we did a study in 2015 called the N-FAC study. And that study showed that for any hundred we are letting out, we are recovering 48 shillings only. Now, if that continues, in about 30 years, that fund will not be there. So although we are charging 4%, and you know the inflation is about 8%, so we are losing the money on a daily basis. So the consideration to increase may be considered maybe after after this cohort of new funding model completes their course in the next five years, maybe.
I don't think that's very good news. So I think we keep the interest the way it is. He wanted the lower interest, he didn't want the higher interest. You are talking about. So I think the the interest at the moment is not sustainable, but let's keep it there as we figure out what to do next. I will take another bunch of questions.
Where do we start this way?
Commander in chief, my name is Felix Ucheng. I'm the president of Dester University. My question was on the variables of the MTI regression analysis. Like the independent variables, like the primary school one went, the high school one went may not really reflect their level of need. Some of us appear to be beneficiaries of well wishes right from preschool. Now, when we want to gauge our poverty index by the primary school and the high school we went, it might not really reflect our level of need. And as though there are appeals, they are not always successful. And this is to the detriment of our constituents. And again, Your Excellency, I know you've talked about capitation and about maybe trustees owning private and public universities. But I'll give you a case study of KC University. They had an influx of students and their facilities were so stretched. Whereas a school like Dester University, we have a state-of-the-art School of Law and School of Lancing. And these facilities are laying bare and some of these students could also come and learn with us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Sorry. Okay, maybe I take another. Yeah, maybe this way.
Thank you very much, His Excellency. I'm Ongaro Richard from Jaramog Yogingodinga University. I have a question. In the first case, I want to ask the people from the Helboard. There are my four years for now, but when we joined, we applied for these loans. And so I'm expected to settle my loan. That is summing to almost 240 plus the interest. I know it can't exceed over 300,000. But today, with the new funding model, how much are these students expected to pay at the end of their fourth year? Another question. You say that the bonding began in 1986, but it never sound like it sounds today. We never knew that these bands existed. Okay, maybe the ideas and the ideologies are good, but the mode of implementation has gone astray. Why could you do this? So that these students doesn't know or get to know where they are placed because as they join, they must ask which band am I placed? So that they can know which fee they are going to pay. His Excellency, in the field of education, it's a place that requires silence. It doesn't require spectators or fans to cheer as we sit in class to take our exams or a referee to be biased on the other team. Under the capacity of your office, you are capable of facilitating and capacitating the reconstruction of this new funding model to be worth for us. Please do. Thank you.
Thank you for this chance.
With respect to hierarchy, my name is Melody Uerimongeri.
With respect to hierarchy, my name is Melody Uerimongeri from Jquat. I'm also a law student. My question is on late disbursement of funds to students. As it stands in the previous, there are previous instances where late disbursement of loans to students was a common occurrence. And I happen to be, to sit in a chair, to chair in a bursary committee in my university. And it's really disheartening to see students unable to do their exams because school fees has not been fully catered for by the time the exams begin. What is the government or the help planning to do in that regard so that we can minimize these instances of late disbursements to universities? Thank you.
Thank you, Melody. Finally, just, let's just, we'll do another round. That's, then we'll come back to you and we'll come to the people here. Yes? Who? Okay, somebody in front.
I want first to acknowledge your presence as the fifth president and commander in chief of the Armed Forces. My beautiful name that my father gave me is Kisero Junior, Kennedy OTN. I'm the secretary general of Kenya Methodist University. And I have few things to put across, Your Excellency. First, when I entered this hall, I like checking where I am. I saw from whatever is written here, hashtag fee has fallen. Your Excellency, the fee has not fallen, that's why we are here. And first thing first, Mr. President, I've been privileged to be under your administration in two capacities. One, I enjoyed your administration when you were an MP in Eldoret North. Yeah, we used to learn Apokama Good Apochini Karibuna Queen. And secondly, I've also experienced your leadership now that you are the president. Mr. President, I can assure you, they are totally different. From when you were MP, people used to go to the street to celebrate your achievements. Nowadays, we just go to the streets to demonstrate. And Mr. President, don't get me wrong in the first place. The reason is why I know when you are the president, it comes with a lot of responsibility and people to advise. And I will start off by saying, those who advised in this new funding model, I will not be wrong to say there is a problem. And that's why we are here. We have to go back to the drawing board, we have to start off afresh. And my question is, Mr. President, the first question is, what was so wrong with the old funding model that we could not sit down and amend it? Because even a constitution of a country, you just don't wake up one day and bring a new constitution. We always go and say, we go to the parliament, they amend it and they take it to the president to ascend and sign it. So I feel we should go back to the old funding model and amend it. Because, Mr. President, we don't like, we don't lack stakeholders, we don't lack resources. These people sitting here, what were na fanya, law, nursing, medicine, there are brains here which can sit down in those panel and say, where did we go wrong? First, I want to acknowledge that the new funding model has got good ideas, very brilliant ideas, but the implementation is very wrong and it's not pleasing based on the fact that there are also challenges from the help. You know, when comrades sit in the same room with the help guys, it's a miracle. But we are very happy to sit down with them and discuss in your presence. Mr. President, I want to also talk about, I come from KEMU, which is a private university. And my question there is in, you have spoken, I've understood what you have said in regards to scholarship and the loans. Comrades, you know, kama is diwendio mtoamkono. I have my president here, Masai Chabet. You know comrades come to you and tell you, Kisero, we have been placed in this band. And people are really suffering, Mr. President. And my question is, why then do coops have to place them in private university if they can't be sustained the same way as those in public university? And in that regard, Mr. President, I acknowledge that you have said the government, this is my chance with the Mr. President. You have acknowledged that the government said it has debts and my university is one that is in the same category. The government, they have been so lenient enough to allow students to learn with the limited resources they have. Because we need to learn, those who are there in KEM. Then, Mr. President, one, recently you were awarded a beautiful degree at Baraton University, if I'm not wrong. Honorary degree at Baraton University. And there was one picture that really took my attention. I know most of you saw the picture. There was a little girl called Naomi who was in the midst of graduate and she was there admiring all the graduates, the beautiful gown. Then I asked myself, why does this new funding model want to kill the dream of that young girl? Of wanting to graduate? I want to say this, Mr. President. As the commander, I first started by saying I acknowledge your presence as the fifth president and the commander in chief of our Defence Forces. And one of your roles in that regard is to act. Please act, Mr. President. We beg you. Please act. Then lastly, lastly, Mr. President, we don't have to go to the street when we can resolve this thing here today. Because we also don't like going to the streets when we can solve things at the table. We are ready to be part of the discussion, we are ready to listen, we are ready to work and ensure that we change this. But the bottom line remains, let's go to the old funding model, amend it to what you wanted to achieve with the new funding model. Thank you so much. God bless you.
Which way? Are we, we are finished with here? Let's go here now. I think we are making one round. We started there, we came here, we came there. Okay, so where? Maybe in front here, somewhere, yeah. Okay. Your name, please?
Santi Sana Mntukufu Raiz. Jina langu ni Brian Waka Kutoka Chuo Kiku Charongo. Tunapoku sanika apa si kuya leo kuajilia kuzungumzia masomo katika vio viku. Mntukufu Raiz hatuwezi soma pasipoku wa na osalama. Tungeomba utupe osalama sisi wanafunzi katika vio viku. Agalabu katika kila chuo kiku tuu ena police bases ambazo zita tusaidia. Kusababu comrades wanapenda kuwanampira usiku, na wangependa opate osalama. Jumbo lapili bwana Raiz. Jumbo lapili ntazungumzia uongozi wawanafunzi katika vio viku. We need a student body, an active student body that will fight for our priorities and our grievances in that commission or rather that committee that you set for academic or rather to do investigations on how we are going to better our learning programs and institutions. Therefore, Mr. President, tuko hapa viongozi kutoka vio viku mbali mbali apa in Kenya. Na hivi karibuni tutazindua chamachetu, na tungependa bwana Raiz. Katika baraza lako uweze kutupa fusa ya kuweza kuwanamwakilishi wetu ambaye ata weza kuleta mambo ambaye anatusumbua kule kwenye ground. Mimi napenda sana na ibuako, uwa natuambia kuamba ya yanaskiza ground akikuanbia. Kuhivyo, we need also someone in that committee that will help us bring our ideas on the table. Thank you so much, bwana Raiz. Santi.
Thank you very much. I think those are four. Let me answer those ones again and then I will, we will come back to another round of questions. Felix Ocheng, I think right here. You said that correctly, that some of the criteria used in this whole assessment of the funding model is what primary school you attended, what secondary school you attended, and that kind of classification. Let me tell you, Felix, that it's important because I will tell you that any student who attends a national school has eighty-five percent chance of joining a university. In other words, I'm telling you that eighty-five percent of all students who go to a national school go to university. Only ten percent of students who go to a day school have a chance to go to university. So when we find a child who has gone to a day school in some rural place, we give them another leg up because it means they have to work extra hard to be able to attain the same grades. Because in many of those institutions, as I told you, Felix, they don't have laboratories, many of them have very inadequate number of teachers. And that is the real problem. So some of these parameters may look small, but they mean a lot in terms of the students. Let me also tell you that, and this is something that really, you know, I know, I don't know how to put it, but only ten percent of the children of the poor make it to university. It is very serious. It is something that depresses me. Yeah? Because number one, they cannot afford to go to a national school. They cannot afford to go to a private school. Many of them hardly, you know, they end up in a day school somewhere at home. So this is one hell of a conversation we must have. We cannot continue as a nation to have an education system that shuts out millions of the children of the poor. I don't know how to put it, it's as blunt as that. If you look at the curve of students in our universities, the children of the poor are absent. They are the ones in those three thousand five hundred secondary schools that don't have teachers, they don't have laboratories, they are day schools, they are in those areas. It is the reason why I have asked the Ministry of Education, I am putting three billion shillings in Nairobi to build five thousand classrooms because Nairobi slums are the worst. Those are the children of the poor, they never go to school and they are in the city here. PS, you know that. I have discussed this with the governor of Nairobi, I have discussed this with the MPs of Nairobi and so many other areas. We need a lot of affirmative action. So, Ocheng, to your point, it is because of that realization that some of the parameters we are using, you know, a child that has gone to a bridge school in Kibra or some school in Lokechogio, you know, it is something for us to consider when we are looking at how to place them. So we will continue to improve on the model. We are not saying the model is perfect, but I think to a great extent, it is towards ninety-five percent in the right direction and we will keep improving on it. Mongaro Richard, you have told me that by the end of your fourth year, your loan will be something like two hundred and forty thousand, right? And you are asking me, what will the new guys, what will be their loan after they, after four years? It's going to depend on the course that they are pursuing. Let me tell you, Richard, you know, we have to be brutally honest with ourselves. The old model, the differentiated unit model, assumed that all courses were the same. And a course in medicine costs the same as another course in a different subject. The reality that is that it is not. University chancellors are here, vice chancellors are here. I don't know whether university vice chancellors are here. Who is willing to tell us that there is a difference? Yeah? Yeah, they are here. There is a difference. And this model, this model recognizes, this new model recognizes that a course in medicine costs six hundred thousand to train. A course in education costs a hundred and eighty thousand to train. And therefore, for a student doing medicine, Government of Kenya gives more for the student doing medicine as a percentage because it costs more to train that student. And if we don't give more to train that student, we will end up with a student who is, with a graduate who is half baked because we didn't give them the resources to train the student correctly. That is the difference between this model and the other one. So there is every reason why we have to interrogate this model. Let me, let me ask. But you know, the truth is the truth. It cannot be changed. I want a vice chancellor who is here to volunteer. On, yes, Malimu, and you say which college you?
Your Excellency, I happen to be the vice chancellor of Alupe University. Also previously a member of the Presidential Working Party on Education Reform and a member of the party that recommended this model. And we agreed.
You know, let's be, let's listen. You know, we are intellectuals.
Yeah.
You know, and intellectuals, you listen to reason. You know, we are not a mob. We are people who want to reason. And I like what Junior here, Kisero, he said. He said, we want to listen, we want to challenge, you know, and we want to be part of the solution. So let us listen. And you can challenge what professor is saying, the same way you are challenging what I'm saying. I mean, it's the right thing for intellectuals, professor.
Your Excellency, I'm going to pick on a course in my university, which we are beginning in September, and that is a Bachelor of Science in Nursing. A Bachelor of Science in Nursing. In preparation for that program, we've had to spend almost three point eight million. to prepare equipment for nursing even before we start. It's not the same as preparing students for teacher education, where I need the four walls, I need a micro teaching lab, which does not cost even a quarter of what it will cost me to prepare a nurse. And indeed, the skills lab for nursing alone, even when Q was telling me I am ready, they have still been given other things to buy, are going to cost me one point six seven million. So preparing a nurse is very expensive. And so we cannot have the same cost for preparing a teacher, preparing a doctor, preparing a lawyer, like the differentiated unit cost was doing. Indeed, colleagues and our students who are here, some of our universities were paying us sixty percent of our salaries using the old model. But right now, if I am able to get the correct bonding for my students, your Excellency, I'll be able to support even capital development within my institution within the next two years. And that is the truth of the matter. I will not have to beg for money and ask for money and wait for capitulation. But I do take on board your concerns about the correct bonding so that there is a normal curve depending on how we deal with our students. So, your Excellency, I will say all courses don't cost the same. And our students should appreciate that if we get this money and we don't do our best with that money, then we are responsible for what is going to happen. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much, Professor. Richard also said maybe there is a problem with the mode of implementation. Maybe there are good ideas, but there is a problem with the mode of implementation. Richard, let me take you back a bit, if you allow me. I have had occasion to sort out two other problems like this one in our education sector. When I became Minister for High Education, for nineteen years, students had to wait for two years before you can join university. And nobody wanted to sort it out because it was difficult. Every minister dodged, you know, danced around it because people don't want to solve problems. It is easy to color problems, oh, we have a big problem. You know, talk about the problem. Explain the problem. So, you know? But it's difficult. I have, I, it's okay for people to talk about the problems. I see many people. Oh, you know, there is this problem. The students are being placed in the wrong band. This model is not good. But I have tremendous respect for the people who have ideas on how to solve the problem, on how to come up with solutions. Yeah? So I sorted out the problem of students having to wait for two years. It was difficult. I was calling names. People said I was going to destroy the education system. But we were in carrying huge losses. You know? A student finishing from four and waiting for two years, many of them, by the time they were going to university, many of them had dropped out, others had gone to pursue other things. Some of the girls had gotten pregnant, you know, and it was just chaos. So I took it upon myself and drove a program that eventually, in one and a half years, we sorted out the problem. Number two, we had a big issue, a big conversation, as I told you earlier, about education and the absence of technical education in our system. I took it upon myself and I am very proud today that from twenty, thirty thousand students in our Tibet, we today have seven hundred thousand students and we don't have a skills gap that existed before. Again, it took a lot of courage. These two is one such challenge. I am asking you guys, let us solve it together, the way Junior here said. And we can do it together. We can do it. So let me combine what, before I come to Melody on lead dispersment, let me go with what, to what Kisero Junior Otierno said. He said, what was wrong with the old model? Yeah? Number one. Number two, why don't we amend the old model? Yeah? And number three, why don't we do it together? Junior, let me call you that. You're so right. I will tell you what was wrong with the old model. And then I will tell you what we are doing with the new model and how we can do it together. I don't know even whether it is me to say what was wrong with the old model. The old model was almost destroying our education. Because, number one, it assumed that all the courses were the same. Number one. It also assumed that government had the money to pay eighty percent for everybody, when it did not. And the results were disastrous. Scott Theological College, a university, closed down because of the old model. Many universities here, when I came into office, because of the old model, twenty-three out of forty public universities were bankrupt. And if you are going to a university that is bankrupt, explain to me what kind of education you are going to get from a university that is bankrupt, friends? And I'm, are there university chancellors here, vice chancellors here who know how serious that is? What was the situation? Yeah? Are they, are they here? Vice chancellors, say many. You know, if, if, if the old model was working, tell these students the old model was good and, you know, let's, let's go back to the old model. Yeah? So the vice chancellors are here. Any vice chancellor want to tell us, yes, who, lady here? Or, oh, yeah, here, from Embu University.
Yeah, thank you very much, your Excellency. I want to say that, indeed, as you've seen, the the old model was killing our universities. And I stand here on behalf of all the universities because I'm the chairman of the vice chancellor forum. And therefore I can talk on that mandate. And I would want to say as of June twenty twenty-three seventeen, I mean twenty-three out of the forty universities were technically insolvent. And there are one of this model, which we just attended last year, has been able to get many of those universities out of that pit. And we have done simulations that we have seen in three years' time, in three to four years' time, all the universities will be, will have turned around and we all stopped being insolvent. And therefore, I would want to say as vice chancellor, your Excellency, we supported this model because it's a model that we see is going to do to turn us around. For example, I would want to say University of Embu is one of those that would have been otherwise technically insolvent. In fact, in that list, I'm number seventeen. But I can say as of now, we are in the positive. And it's only one round. I, we owned our lecturers in, because of the old model, when we raised the CMBA's, we could not be able to pay the new salaries. And I owned, we owned our lecturers and our staff members' areas for two years. And because of this new model, last June, May and June, we were able to pay those areas for two years. So right now, University of Embu is clean, we own nothing. So it's, it's a model, your Excellency, we want to, we want to support because you could draw a line and we would have told you when all the universities will be technically insolvent in this country. But we know now that there is a turnaround and we are going to get out of there. Thank you, your Excellency.
Let me, let me say this, my friend Junior. The model, the student-centered model is actually an improvement. In your own words, you said, why don't we improve? Why don't we take the old model and make it better? This is exactly what we are doing. The household contribution was there. It is there in this model. The scholarship was there. It is there in this model. The loan was there. It is there in this model. The only difference we are making is that we are looking at how do we make children from vulnerable families? How do we assist them? How do we make sure that when we send students to a university, we also give the university resources to make sure they teach the course for which they have admitted the student? It is true. I mean, it is a fact that it doesn't cost the same to teach one course as against the other. And this funding model is sensitive to that. It is also sensitive to students who come from vulnerable families. I know I have been accused correctly that I sometimes think too much about poor people and I push, you know, the rich people to do things for the poor ones. But I mean, that is society. You know, you, 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 I don't know how to put it. But anyway, that is, that is that. So you have just told me, Junior, that among the universities that we owe a lot of money is Kemmo, your university, right? Do you know why we owed Kemmo a lot of money? It's because of the old model, which you are telling me, let us go back to the old model. How will Kemmo get out of the hole? If we continue with the old model, it means Kemmo continues to accumulate debt. You know? Friend, let us, let us deal with this as openly, as transparently as possible. You know, the vice chancellors who are sitting here are not mad men and women. You know, for them to agree for us to work with this model, they've seen what happens with the old model. They participated. We worked with them. We worked on simulations. We brought in experts to look at because the one thing we cannot do is to compromise on the quality of our education. The old model is compromising on the quality of our education because if lecturers are not paid, if material is not available to train our doctors, if workshops are not working to train our engineers, we will end up with the wrong engineers, we will end up with the wrong doctors, we will end up with the wrong teachers, and we will destroy our country. It will be very reckless of us. It will be very irresponsible of us. Me as president, these vice chancellors as managers of our universities, you as students, for us to accept, to walk a path that leads to the destruction of our country and our education for that matter. Melody has said, Njeri has said, lead dispersment. I agree with you. That is part of what brought us to this very unfortunate situation. The reason why we put together this new funding model is so that we are clear on what our requirements are. And I have made a deliberate decision that I'm going to invest more money in education. Because if we don't get education right, we will get nothing right. Because we will, everything will go wrong. And I don't want to throw money at a problem. I want us to invest money in a plan that is well thought out because I would have just decided to put money. But you put money in a, in a, in a, in a model that's not working, you don't solve nothing. It is the reason why I invested a lot of time. I brought in a lot of professionals and I am willing, just the same way Junior you said, bring forward ideas. Let us look at this model again. If there is any improvements we can make, if the student body can come up with improvements, let us subject it to scientific evidence and let us see how we can improve on it. The improvement is what we are doing. We are improving on the model that was to make it better. So, Njeri, we have taken time this time round to make sure that as we implement this model, it is tied to our financial resources. We have clearly identified how much money we need. You know, we based the old model on assumptions, which assumptions were wrong and almost collapsed our education system. This time round, we are using empirical figures. That's why we are feeding them into our budget so that we give the universities the money that is enough to teach every student for the course that they have been admitted. It is not necessary for us to tell a university, teach for us this doctor. And we have given them money enough to teach a teacher. It is not right because they will not, they will not do it. And if they do it, we will end up with a half-baked graduate. Brian Waka, Usalama. Umesema Yakuamba Pale University, Munataka Usalama. Nanakubaliana na wewe, hundred percent. Sasa sijui makarao nikituma havo pale. Eh? Sumutawashi guli kia kuali. I agree with you that sometimes the security situation in some of our universities is wanting and it is a conversation I can have with the vice chancellors. If the vice chancellors can give us details of where they need support to make sure that universities, our universities are safe, we are prepared to have that conversation. And if the student body can work with the vice chancellors and work with us so that we can identify areas that we can improve security in our colleges, that would be a good thing. I agree with you that an active student body that is representative of the student views and interests is done. And I support the democratization of universities. And I support the democratization of university leadership so that they can better represent the student body. Um, you have also asked me whether I can establish a mechanism where I can directly listen to some of your views. I am happy to do that. If you can tell me what mechanism you want to use to engage with me. Uh, I think I have tried to engage with some of the uh, university student leadership. Just make sure that when you expect, when you come with that leadership that will engage with me, wasi endekusalemiwa. Asapabu sasikwana endeku, wana endeku teswa. So we can, we can, we can have that conversation. Um, I think those are the issues so far. I can take another round of, um, I think the lady here is, or there is a gentleman there maybe? Or the lady? Okay, the lady here.
Thank you, His Excellency. My name is Marceline Mungesi from Muranga University. And we have, mine is a suggestion and not a question. We have funds allocated to their constituencies to provide bursaries in the constituency level. Why can't these funds be given to help to increase the scholarship part and reduce the loans given to the students? Thank you.
Thank you very much. There is a gentleman there. Maybe we can.
A minute.
Viva komrades, viva. Viva komrades, viva. I am Gishangi Gitonga, the J Quatt Secretary General. And Mr. President, for the entire time I was sitting on this seat, it was becoming hotter and hotter for the simple reason that by every minute I'm receiving phone calls. Because before I came here, I engaged my people from J Quatt and they told me if I did not tell you the truth, they would impeach me. So allow me to be as candid with you as possible. Mr. President, my first question and one of the biggest questions my people have been asking me is why the rush? Why the rush in implementing a model that has a lot of technicalities? Why the rush? Because I am a financial engineer and as you have said, the issue of the, of the interest rates is determined by actual scientists. But, uh, the model in itself has a lot of issues up to this moment. So even if we had all these issues coupled together, you've given people not making it to campus of campuses such as the Scott Bible Institute being closed. But Mr. President, we have a lot of people being affected right now. While we were at Naivasha, Mr. President, once we left, we felt like rubber stamps. Nonge ukweli komrades. For the simple reason that after that, a report was given in Naivasha, we had a summit in Naivasha around June. And, uh, the report that came out is that we had agreed to the model. And our comrades were really angry with us, Mr. President. So we felt at that point like we are being set up. Like what you are telling the people is just for formalities. And we have spoken in a lot of forums, Mr. President. But I believe you have already noticed that people are not clapping much to even the best of points because there's a general tiresome. There, there's a general exhaustion among the people because you are usually given a lot of promises. We will come to forums such as this, but you know that very little of it will be implemented. And Mr. President, we also know that corruption is the biggest public expenditure. And before you came into office, there were people you came into office with who had corruption scandals. But once they got into office, they, they became suddenly people of integrity. And Mr. President, inasmuch as we are discussing education, we know that we, the help decries of the, you, you've even told us and it's also something I take issue with. While we were with you at State House, you told us that the debt was around seventy billion or, there was a time you told us seventy billion. A time came, you told us private universities have fifty-one billion. And today you said one hundred and eighty billion. And as a financial engineer, I'm finding it a little bit hard to reconcile all these figures, Mr. President. So you could also state it a bit more clearly over that. But the help and the PS of education has told us severely that the, that the public institutions had debts and all such kinds of stuff. But you have seen exposes on Twitter, exposes by the Auditor General telling us that a chair somewhere costs three point three million, Mr. President. I, I will not rush to criticize anything of the sort. But you know that corruption is a big expenditure in this country. What is your administration doing to ensure that corruption ends in public institutions? Mr. President, we, or you are using nine beaters to classify people. Once again, I'm a financial engineer and I take keen interest in numbers. Use nine factors to classify people. Now explain this to me. We have a parent earning twenty-five thousand shillings. And the first born has made it to J Quatt to do financial engineering. But this family has seven people. It has six siblings under the person who has made it to financial engineering. So, and what category does this person fall? Let's even say it's fifty thousand. This person lives in the CBD at a place where their life is very expensive. So, and what category does this person fall? Or will we have the same, the same, same thing repeating itself of that camp, of that girl who was looking at the people with graduation counts? Because the firstborn yes made it to campus and they found the new funding model and they appealed because they were placed in band five. But unfortunately, as you've heard, we have, let me confirm the numbers. We have twenty-six thousand appeals. And also as a financial engineer, I know that not all appeals usually go through as they ought to because of the system glitches. Mr. President, kindly explain to me where this person should land. Because among the nine beaters, uh, the issue of the siblings and probably the dependents around that family. Because some of these families adopt people not because they have too much, but because they have compassion on the people in the society who the government is unable or unwilling to help. Mr. President, we also have the issue of a defunct kuso. And Mr. President, I love what the gentleman was spoken in Swahili. I must first commend him because of the perfect grammar. Uh, of the issue of, we, I, I do not know if you know anyone who represent other campus students. Because comrades, do you know anyone who represents you? Do, do you have anyone? So, Mr. President, I would like to ask you to probably constitute something that will even be recognized by the government. Because the students who have been crying, student leaders who have been crying for a very long time of people who are there to just buy themselves scuffs, Mr. President. People who are there not to represent our will. Who are there not to represent our will, but their own. People who are there for their own stomachs. And these are the people who we are striking against. Mr. President, people in this room are angry because of two people. One, it is you. I've told you I'll be impeached if I do not tell you the truth. My constituents told me that they feel, and I will put this as respectfully as possible that you advise your advisors. Because of the issues, for example, let's put it, let's put it, let's say the issue of the new funding model. Mr. President, the only person who has explained the new funding model in the best way is you. So, uh, my constituents were asking me as in, should in the people in charge of that ministry be able to put it better than the president himself? The other person that the comrades are very angry with is in this room, seated somewhere in front, Mr. President. Somebody who has been claiming to represent our interests. But comrades, does that person represent your interests? Does that person represent your interests? So, Mr. President, if anyone comes to you claiming, Mr. President. The, the comrades are telling me to tell him to walk out, but you are here for peace, Mr. President. So I would want to put it as straight as possible and to be as brief as a cock on a hen. Mr. President, as things stand, we do not have a representative. We do not have a representative unless you enable us have some permanent office to ensure that student leaders are represented. And you ensure that unlike the many government offices we have today, the government will not interfere with the affairs of the students. Mr. President, uh, the lady there has raised an important issue. First, the questions that are here, most of them have been raised by the people around me because they've realized that you might not have a lot of time to speak. Uh, somebody named Karongo Adangwa, the Senator of Kiambu County, and by the way, God willing, I will replace him, raised the point, the point of all these monies being to are demonstrating, Mr. President. We have twenty-two CSS, we have CSS, we have permanent secretaries. And all these people have budgets and they have salaries, but the president. So these people have bursaries. And then to get a bursary, you must know somebody in the country that you live in. You've, you've said that you feel for the poor. You've said that you are blamed for feeling for the poor and somebody open that we are all politicians and we all got elected through public relations. So, Mr. President, if you really feel for the poor, kindly address that issue. You are, we have been with you in several forums and you've said that you are not afraid to buy the bullet, to take the bull by its horns. Mr. President, the MPs will disturb you. Just, just a minute. I've been sent by a lot of people. You have got my time, a lot of time. So, Mr. President, uh, this MP's will bring a lot of issues. Somebody said that once you remove the CDF, people will not be vying for these positions because they go there for their stomachs. Mr. President, kindly consider that because that will be a legacy. And actually, if you are able to do that, Mr. President, in twenty-twenty-seven, I will personally have no issue electing you. So, Mr. President, address that issue. And finally, Mr. President, I feel like there are a lot of discrepancies in what, uh, the num, in the numbers that you are being given. For example, you've said that the, the professor from Alupe, who proposed the new funding model, has spoken about the people, the some, the person doing teaching, the other one doing law, the other one doing medicine, paying the same fee. But we are student leaders here and you are students. Is that the truth? No, no, no. Under the differentiated, you, uh, differentiated unit costing, does a teacher pay the same amount as a doctor? So, Mr. President, we kindly ask that such small things be reconciled because these are the things that make people strike. Probably Naivasha, the help did a lot of good work. But as I said in the newspaper yesterday, the Daily Nation, you could go through it. I said that you might be doing a lot of good work, but your communication team is very bad. So, Mr. President, for the little good work that you do, ensure that you know. And last but not least, there are students who differ and also help me on this issue. We have students who deferred in twenty-twenty-two, but they have come back right now. I feel that it will be very unfair for these students to be classified under the new funding model, Mr. President. And they are a lot. And they have sent me with their cries, Mr. President. So I stand here as a representative of my people, kindly address those concerns.
Thank you, thank you. I think we have, we have taken already two from this side. Let's take, I think the final two from there and then from here.
Um, my name is Muangale Agneta Napuna, Director of Social Affairs and Special Needs for university. Uh, allow me recognize the presence of my Vice Chancellor, Professor Sangakoske. Um, one major issue that is really, really disturbing me while sitting on that seat is that we all know that in this country, we have a bigger number of people who are poor. All of us knows that, right? I am very much devastated to hear that only twelve percent of the whole population of the students in this country are placed in band one. If we really, really, Your Excellency, can do something about this, we can appreciate because there is no point of giving twelve percent of the whole population to band one and expect that the other people will just have to, to appeal. Why is, why would I say this? It's because when giving twelve percent, you knew very well, or the team knew very well, that you have a lot of poor people in this country. So at least they will have at least given a bigger percentage to these people. And at least consider also those people who are, um, earning maybe middle or who have bigger salaries. I believe that in this meeting where we are, we are seated, uh, we have to be having at, at least fifty percent of the whole population placed in either band one or two. Then the little number of people in this country who at least can acquire what they need in life to be placed in those other bands, at least fifty percent, so that it can strike a balance. Number two, Your Excellency, as Muangale, I believe that you really wish well for university. And I know very well that you have the interest of those people who are needy in this society of Kenya at heart. And I would ask this for, um, elaboration kindly. The other day, uh, the directive was given that students will just go, uh, join to university, then like without even paying anything. Like, let's reason out. How will it be when students are in university years? They have not paid the money. They need services. They, we have workers, we have lecturers and all other stakeholders that really need to be paid. Of course, there are basic services that you really need in our university. So, how are the university going to manage this? If I say it, I only need a clarification. Then, Mr. President, I will also need maybe some explanation on this, the placement. Of course, everybody is saying the funding model is the brilliant thing that, uh, has ever happened in this country. But now the problem is its implementation. Um, in a case where, of course, we have parameters to place these students in band one to either band five. But now how is a kid maybe, and sometimes even childrens end up, uh, remaining on their own or maybe staying with their grandparents? As a student or as this kid, how are they going to present themselves? How are they going to, uh, to defend themselves? When it comes to their placement, because they don't have anything to show.
Thank you, Magneta. You have asked three questions. I think it's only fair that we stop there. Thank you very much. Maybe we can give one more person up, maybe, or yeah, maybe this guy at the, in front here. Um, yep.
To His Excellency, Mr. President, all protocols are sought. I am Nick Okoth from the Avation College of Mombasa. My concern towards the new funding model is drawn to the situation whereby you have got twins. They are joining the compass at the same time. But then during the placement, you realize one is placed in band one and the other finds herself in band five. How do we handle such kind of a situation?
Thank you very much. Can I have, maybe we can take two from this, this side? And then we can take two from that side. A lady and a gentleman. We have a gentleman right behind there.
Yeah, thank you, Your Excellency, for creating this opportunity. I'm Foster Wandera from African Nazarene University and by God's grace, I'm serving as Chairperson of the Student Council. Your Excellency, African Nazarene University is a, a private university. And under this new funding model, we feel discriminated as private universities. I am yet to be convinced as much as you have explained to us this funding model because of the following reasons. Maybe you can help me to understand if you answer two, these two questions. If the government decides to offer scholarship to the students to go to private university, is it that the scholarships are being offered to the universities or to the students who are Kenyans and they have a choice to go to the private universities? Number two, Your Excellency, if, uh, I believe the funding model is running, if this model is going to, is going forward, then we are being forced then we are being forced as the student leaders in private universities to also find the solution. Just the way you committed to the people of Kenya. We also, I also committed to the students of African Nazarian University that I will have to make sure that also your needs are met. If, Yes Excellency, I can give you a bank account for African Nazarian University right now? You can just send the money there, I will allo- we will allocate with the team and we'll give the report to you. Thank you.
One, a lady this time round, eh, let's get a lady.
Hello.
Hello.
Yes, I'm Teresa Anzisa and from Tete Taveta University, Special National Secretary. Then, eh, Malapa Malinimeka, Tulukua Tumekusani Shama Swali Kua Homar, Sena Nezongia Junimepata Mike.
Comrades' wisdom! Comrades' power! Comrades' Viva! University, I mean higher education funding and intra-school transfer. You know, once comrades, I mean the Form Fours, or a student is done with the Form Four education and therefore the Coops portal is open for application of the courses and the universities, they are not aware of which courses. They are not aware of, eh, maybe which courses to apply for and therefore they opt for any course. And they believe that on reporting to that university after the placement, they'll get to change their courses. But now this has become a problem. Because on changing the programs, the funding, I don't know, the funding board or the government. An example of the three hundred students in Poon University who transferred their courses and therefore, up to now, their fee has never reflected. And I have a problem with, eh, why should the entire cost of the program reflect in a student's portal? Instead of, eh, the household obligation, I mean the household contribution? Now, you get, eh, we get to know that the government, due to failure to release the funds to the universities, these students are not able to do their exams. These students cannot access the university services. These students are held back from enjoying the privileges of the university, just as other students. I'd really love to hear you respond to that. Secondly, eh, in Naiwasha, with the PS, though she gave you a contrary, eh, opinion or conclusion, she told you that we agreed to everything and we said that the fa- the model is really working, which was not true. Actually, we told her that for this model, if we have to stick to the new funding model, let us do away with Band Four and Band Five. Because these are the problematic bands, the bands that are creating so many problems to the parents. In Poon University, last week, we had students joining and majority of them came with their parents. So you find that we are helping in their admission process. And a parent is coming thinking that I'm part of the administrators, crying that, oh, my student is placed in Band Four. I have, I aren't, like, my net worth is zero, what should I do? Now, na na doa machozi, really, Mr. President, I thought this government is for Mama Mboga and Mchuya Boda Boda. So what do we do to such, or rather to help such parents and students? Number three, you said that if students can propose, eh, better ideas to make this model, model work, then I'm a social scientist, I can offer one. Now that my colleague, my wise colleague there said that we have so many basari kits in different dockets, starting from the MCA up to the presidential, your office also has a basari. I don't know if that is true, but you'll, you know it yourself. So if we can constitute it into one kit and make education completely free or reduce the cost of programs, that will be very appropriate and this model will work. Number two, I asked myself, now who sits back and decides that now this program is going to cost this much? Who? I think the Vice Chancellors and you know better. Do we have a fixed figure that should be the, like, ye la zima to ye cost of, eh, ye program? For example, medicine should cost this much? See, we can reduce, right? So if we have a reduced, eh, cost of program. And let's say, for example, you have those, maybe the impossibility of Band Four and Five being done away with. Now we have Band One, Two, to Five. We have students in Band One paying nothing, Band Two paying nothing, Band Three paying something, Band Four paying something a little more than those in Band Three. And Band Five paying the, like, that way this model will work. Mr. President, I can assure you. Thirdly, we've talked about the corruption in the institutions. We have the, like, this seat, Mtoaki Kombia, this seat costs a million. That's crazy, we have this thing called Procurement Act or Procurement something. Like, each and everything has to be procured. We have those procurement offices, those are the sources of corruption. Mr. President, if you have to do something, then start with doing away with those offices. How the hell can we have a seat here costing a million when we know the actual price? So can we have the, eh, the Procurement Act done away with? Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, eh, my friend Omosh, is that your name? Omosh? Omash?
My name is Omar.
Omar, Omar, okay, Omar. Thank you. Let's take, eh, two. I am informed that, eh, we are running behind time, but I will take two more. Yes, my sister?
Okay, I'm Kalen Karemi, the Vice Chair of East African University. Mine is the, on the, what you have said about the private universities. For example, let me give you a case of myself. I studied in the village Ade School. Let me recognize the school Saint James Kereida. At that time, when I managed to get a C plus to join the university. But when I was going to apply through the Coops, my C plus could only admit me to a private university. So you find most people, the, the cluster point is high for the public universities. And yet, they will be, when they are going to apply, they'll be placed in the private universities. And you have said you can't offer the scholarship. Right now, for me to pay the nineteen thousand that I'm paying in the private university I am, my parents are really struggling, that is for a fact. What if that pa- that parent of that student in the same case as mine, who is in a day school, i- is going to pay the same eighty thousand, ninety thousand with that student manage? That the student can't manage because the cluster point for the public university are that high. So what are you going to do about the cluster point? And then, then I'll go to question on the biding. We say of, for example, eh, Masai, who stays at Narok. That person owns hundred cows. When I'm going to apply for that as a, where I studied, I studied in a day school. I'll be placed in Bad One and a hundred, you sell that cow for fifty thousand. The net worth of that person is five million. And that person will be placed in Bad One. Reason being, the person is from the Masai, they are known for the, they are the, those people who doesn't have, let me, sorry to say that. Sorry to say that. And yet, that person, when, that person doesn't have a care to feel about the parent when applying for their help or whatever. And yet, that person, net worth is five million. And that person will be placed at Bad One. And then there's a case, someone from JKWAT said that person is earning twenty-five K. Are we fair on that? Yes, that is my question, on the cluster point and the.
Thank you, thank you, Karemi. Eh, I think we give this chance to a gentleman.
Thank you so much. I'm Vincent Tarus, eh, the President, Mo University. And I'm also a finalist, eh, doing medicine and surgery. Okay, thank you so much. Number one, Mr. President, I'm really not happy at how we were discussing figures of expensive courses. Yes, it's true that the government is paying a lot for students doing the expensive courses. But you also have to look at it from the student's side. And these are the figures, let me, this is, I'm going to use, eh, figures for a student doing dentistry. And of course, with these, eh, with these figures, you could estimate those who are doing medicine, engineering and all those expensive courses. A student in Band One, the one who is very vulnerable, is going to pay thirty-nine thousand shillings. Remember that at the moment, we are paying less than that. We are paying thirty-two thousand, thirty-three, up to forty. And now, a student in Band One is going to pay thirty-nine thousand. My cue, the conception of the new funding model is on the basis of assisting the poor. Number two, a student in Band Two is going to pay seventy-eight thousand shillings. A student in Band Three is going to pay one fifty-six thousand. A student in Band Four is going to pay two thirty-four thousand. And a student in Band Five, three twelve thousand. Now, already we can see and have the impression that expensive courses, or rather, the courses that are expensive to offer will only be for the rich. Because we can all agree that a student in Band Two, Band One, Band Three and Band Four, they are all poor. Now who are going to afford these courses? Mr. President, when we had a meeting at State House, you said that you're going to put a ceiling over which the vulnerable are going to pay. Yes, that is only going to sort the, those who are in Band One. I'm assuming it will be way less than thirty-nine thousand. Now we have sorted those ones. What about the majority? Because, Mr. President, the majority of students are in Band Four with a figure of forty-seven percent. If I can use figures of last year's group. These are the figures I got from Help, that of one thirteen thousand students who applied, forty-seven percent are in Band Four. And I can use as a case in my school, Mr. President. We have students who, up to now, they were just allowed to do the exam without doing, without paying fees. But really, really, the truth is, they won't be able to pay these fees come end of year examinations. And what will be the fate of schools that we are so much trying to salvage? We, we are going to have so many dropouts, Mr. President. And these figures I'm using is for the School of Dentistry. Now we have the School of Engineering and the School of Medicine, the School of Nursing. I thank you, Professor, for the figures, but the figures are too high. And this dream is only going to be for the rich. Now, Mr. President, because we value consultation, I'm going to propose an affirmative action that we have to scrap off the idea that these courses are for the rich. If these courses were for the rich, Mr. President, I don't think you'll be standing there where you are right now. And I don't think all these dignitaries will be seated there where they are right now if these courses were for the rich. Now, allow me to propose an affirmative action that we give more scholarship to these courses so that everyone can be able to afford. The children of the peasant farmers, the children of the poor, the Mama Mboga, that this administration was built in, allow us to have something. Allow them an ability to dream of these courses and pursue them. The issue of loans, Mr. President, that has been spoken about enough. The reason why we are rejecting this new funding model, Mr. President, is because we, we feel the burden of loans on our backs at the moment. I could only imagine those who would join after us and the generations to come. Yes, you said, Mr. President, that it is better to have loans and educated or than not having loans and educated and not, not having loans and non-educated. But those are not the two options that we have, Mr. President. We can have a discussion of how we can balance both so that, so that we can come up with a system that values everyone, a system that accommodates everyone. And until then, Mr. President, allow me to reject this new funding model respectfully.
Thank you very much, eh, Mr. Tarus. I don't know, let me answer, eh, those questions, I think they, they are quite a buffet.
Mr. President, I lo- I've been given, eh, one last concern. Okay, eh, it's, eh, it's, it reads.
Yes.
Eh, okay, the issue of student independence and admin stepping on student leaders. I think this is addressed to all our Vice Chancellors, the management of our schools. Kindly allow student leaders to run the activity, to run the activities with the autonomy that they deserve. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, eh, Mr. Tarus. Let me start with, eh, Mungezie from Moranga University. I think, eh, yeah. Eh, she suggested that how do we, why don't we consolidate all basaris? The ones for the MCA, Member of Parliament, Women Rep, Governor. Eh, somebody suggested that I have some basari, I don't have, just for the record, I don't have any basari kitty. In fact, eh, when I was Minister for Higher Education, there was a basari at the Ministry. And that basari used to benefit people who have connection. The CEO of Help then knows, I said that basari should be transferred. It used to be a hundred million shillings every year. I said that basari should be transferred to Higher Education Loans Board. In fact, it is the money that began the capitation and, eh, and scholarship for our TIVET institutions. I agree with you that it's a positive proposition. It is something that we need to have a conversation about. It is something that I will engage governors about. Because, eh, in our constitution, it is the counties. Once money has been given to the counties, I have no authority as President to decide for the counties. But I think a national conversation that consolidates all these basaris and then we see how far it can go towards making our education affordable is a very positive conversation. I am ready to engage in that conversation and provide leadership in that conversation. My good friend Gishangi from JKWAT has asked me, why the rush? I am tempted to say that, eh, I mean, if the situation our universities were in is not serious to warrant us to have this conversation. And by the way, it took six months to eight months. to eight months of a conversation with different professionals. It was not something that it was over a one night, or a weekend, or a week. It is something that was very clearly thought out. And you said something like, we make promises that we never keep. Let me tell you, this is one commitment I made. The universities are here, the vice chancellors are here. They can tell you the commitments I made on this model were delivered last year, and it is making a difference in our universities. That is the reality. You did say that corruption is a big problem, and I agree with you a hundred percent. Corruption is a big problem. And I want to thank the university leadership. Because part of the corruption that has been going on is on even the money that we give to universities. We decided that we are going to be, to go using technology. I'm very happy that the university leaders accepted that we use technology. Unfortunately, our secondary schools and primary schools took us to court. They still want to deal in cash. And I know we lose a lot of money there. Corruption is something we must deal with firmly. I have made proposals on what we should do as a nation. I have had conversations with the Chief Justice. I have had conversations with the leadership of parliament on what we need to do on legislation to make sure that we deal with corruption. But we can also, corruption is not just about jailing people. It is about putting systems in place that makes sure that corruption doesn't happen. And one of them is to use technology to make sure that we are sure of what we are doing. And that is what this whole system and what we are doing with Help, and what we are doing with Coops, and what we are doing with our universities is all about. I have made it very clear, and I have asked sometimes, sometimes we investigate an incident or a corruption case, and people rush to court, and we are given an order, you cannot investigate so-and-so. We have situations where we have been told, you cannot charge so-and-so. They've gone to court and obtained an order. We must deal, we must interrogate corruption so that we make, we make sure that we deal with it from all angles. You have given a case of where, when somebody has fifty thousand or earns fifty thousand or twenty-five thousand, and they have siblings in university. Maybe they have one student in JK UAT, they have another student in another university. Higher Education Loans Board, can you help me explain how do we treat that parent? Mr. Gishangi wants to know, what category is that? What category is that student? Can you help me?
Thank you, Mr. President, for this opportunity. I'm not working for Help, but I am a member of MTI Task Force and a lecturer at Lakeview University. My name is Dr. Alex Kibet, and I'm going to explain my understanding of this MTI. From the question that was asked was, how do we treat someone who has a lot of dependents? And from the questions that an applicant is asked is, how many dependents do you have? And the main reason why you're required to give that particular response is so that the MTI can be able to calculate a per capita of that particular household before, which is going to be used as an input for determining your score, and which is going to, to be used as an input for your final score that determine where you'll be bonded. And maybe to just say something, Mr. President, as an addition to what you have said. They have indicated, or you have indicated that there are ten indicators that show, or that are used, or that work as a variable. There are actually ten super variables that are used to determine your level of need. But in reality, with each super, there are several other sub-indicators. For example, a family structure, for instance, which is, it has a variable. You have both parents, you have a single parent, which is a mother, a single parent, which is a father, all the way to someone with an abandoned child in the street. And all of them are taken care of. So that when all these factors, from the general super variable to sub-variables, the MTI makes sure that you are classified correctly. The only challenge, my president, that we experienced, because I was at least part of the team that analyzed the information, is the quality of information that our applicants provide for that particular system. This is a system that whatever comes out of it depends on what we input. So if we don't provide the correct information, then we're going to be bonded wrongly. And because we are coming from a point that this is a new system, one of the recommendations that we gave to Help and Higher Education was please leave a room so that if there is anyone who may have submitted wrong information, can still re-provide an information that can be used for reconsideration. And that is why there is an open appeal for a fund, that if you have a different information from what you presented, you can re-provide and you can reconsider. And from the first information we've been given, is within the next three weeks, that is going to be reconsidered. There's something else, again, Mr. President, that I would also wish to say. Is, there's something on what, what if a situation changes in your course, in your course of your studies? How are you going to be taken care of? Let's say today you have both parents, and at the second year of your studies, something happens. Again, that is a factor that during our task force, we consider and say, if a circumstance change, like your parents, guardian loses job, your parent loses job, you lose parents, you can re-provide the information that please reconsider my bonding or my categorization so that I can have a space or be treated where I am supposed to be. There are some other, some other small recommendations that we have suggested to them, and we hope they are going to work. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Do you have anything useful to add, Ms. Kingori?
No, 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 Your Excellency, I think Dr. Kibet has said it well.
Okay, thank you very much. So I think that is the, the information, Mr. Gishangi. You have also told me that there are people who masquerade as representative of students. And they have come to say we represent. I want to tell you for the avoidance of any doubt that any student I have met, they haven't said they represent anybody, at least to me. If they have told other people, I don't know. So I believe that every university has its own representation, right? And I have had everybody here who has spoken, they have said, I am president of this college, vice president of that college. I have not heard anybody here saying, I am the president of all the universities. Or maybe I didn't, maybe it escaped my, my, my thinking, my, my, my listening. So I don't think there is anybody who has come to me to say they represent all the students of the universities. And if, if you are asking me that you want a representative body of all the students, that is a conversation I'm willing to have. And the universities, the leadership of universities should be part of that conversation so that we can all agree, what mechanism are we going to use? Are we going to have elections in some form? Because I mean, we are a democracy. Or how are we going to get a student leadership that represents our universities? That is a conversation that we can have. Somebody has told me, are you the one who said students who differ? There's somebody who told me about students who differ, yes. So what is the situation of students who differ? I am not, yes, Help, Higher Education Loans Board, can you help me there?
Your Excellency, students who differ, the case of KCSE 2022 were all allowed to apply. So far, we have received nine thousand nine hundred and seventy-nine students from KCSE 2022, and this process is ongoing. So no student has been left behind. Thank you.
Now, has he answered the question? Okay, what is the question? The question is, maybe a student who was already admitted was in first year, instead of going to second year, they deferred, and then, is that the case? Okay, okay, which model are they, are they coming? Okay, I think what the question is, those ones who you are now considering. Are you considering them under the old model, or are you considering them under the new model?
They are being considered under the new model.
Yes.
Because the, the model started considering, considering students from KCSE 2022. If you are from the previous years, that is KCSE 2021, 2020, and the previous years, then you fall into the old model.
Thank you very much. Now, my good friend Gishangi says he wants to replace my friend Karungo Dangwa. I wish well. I know you have said that if I behave well, you might consider your vote for me in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-seven. But, Mr. Gishangi, I want to tell you that my focus is not in twenty twenty-seven. That's not my focus. My focus is in transforming Kenya. That is my focus. You know, there is always, you know, I believe that we must focus on the next election. Good people. There is more than the next election. We need to do and make the right decisions for Kenya now. If we, if we make decisions merely because we want to be popular, that's how we get ourselves into the kind of situation our country is. That's where we end with our universities in so much debt. Because we are unable to make the decisions that will get our universities out of trouble. My sister, younger sister, Agneta, I like the name, by the way. Agneta, she, she's wondering, why is only twelve percent considered in band one? When actually majority of the people in Kenya or, you know, a big portion are poor. You know why, Agneta? Many of the children of the poor don't make it to university. That's the problem, and that's what concerns me. You know? I have, I explained to you, you know, that the most disturbing thing is that the children of the poor are not in this conversation. And that is why, and it really bothers me. That is why I made the decision that I am going to hire the largest number of teachers. I'm going to put more money, invest more money in those schools, where the day schools, to make sure that the children of the poor also make it to get to the university so that they can come and sit here and have this conversation with the rest of us. That's my position. Let me also say the following. You have told me, and I, I agree, you are very, you're very sympathetic to my case, that we have said, let the students be admitted, let all the students be admitted, even as we sort out the issues of how much they are going to pay, how much the households are going to pay. And we have said that recognizing, recognizing that it is, it is something we must do. You have said, how then are the universities going to pay? If the students don't pay, if the households don't pay, how will the universities survive? How will they pay for the essentials? Agneta, we are going to give money to our universities because we are giving money on scholarships from, by government, even as they, as, as parents sort themselves out as to whether they are in band one, band two, band three, and their appeals and what have you. As that is going on, we are going to support the universities to make sure that the courses and learning continues from the government's support that comes as scholarship and also from our Higher Education Loans Board, and they are here. They are going to be forwarding the money that is on, on the loans aspects to the, to the universities as well. So that's how we are going to support the universities. You have said something about, there are some situations that marriages break, and I think the two gentlemen have already answered that question, that if your situation changes along the way, you are free to, you're free to bring back your new status so that you can be reconsidered accordingly. Nick Okoth, twins joining university. Higher Education Loans Board, if we have twins joining university, what is the situation?
There was a question when they were filling the form, and they were asked, do you have a sibling joining university or Tivat College? And if they said yes, they were supposed to input either the ID or the IDEX number if they were minors.
And that, and that goes into considering where they are placed?
Yes, because we score them up to a hundred, and that would give them another twenty-nine points to move to, towards band one.
Okay. Forstin Wandera from Nazarim University, you told me that you feel the universities are being... I have tried to explain that the private universities have sponsors, they have endowment funds, they have scholarships from different other avenues. And considering that, we also know that there are students there who deserve support from government, we have made the same loans available to students going to public be available also to students in, in private universities. I'm very happy that you have ideas on how we can make the scholarship work. I am willing to listen to those ideas. I know you have invited me to some form of Harambe or something. I think we have, we have since said we should abolish Harambes or something. We are on the way there. So, or maybe you are suggesting that some private sponsorship of, of students in the, in the university. That one, you can take it up with me offline. We can, it cannot be a conversation here. We can have a conversation in another place. Omar, sorry. Omar, it looks like he has left. Oh, you're there, okay, you, oh, you're put on, you're put on a different outfit. Intra-school transfers, Omar says there are students who, maybe because they are not sure of how things are, they apply for one course, and then when they get to the university, they want to change their courses, and in the process, they are, they get lost somewhere, and their, their issues are not sorted out. High Education Loans Board again, can you help me with that situation? Why is it, why does it take so long when students change courses and they are approved by the universities?
Your Excellency, so what would happen is that the list of the students who have transferred will be forwarded to COOPS for validation, and after COOPS validates that they have transferred to a program they qualify for, then they will upload in our portal, and our system would pick it. So maybe that lag can take a month or so, and that could be affecting the students. But we are going to improve this year, we are going to talk with COOPS so that we can prove that process.
When you say you're going to improve that process, Omar would want to know, it now takes a month, he says it takes three months. What are you estimating that it's going to take? Are you able to give us a shorter timeframe, or we give you time to think about it?
I think even engineering has been done, where COOPS, I'm sorry, I'm talking on behalf of COOPS, have availed the transfer module to the universities. I don't know whether the vice chancellors can confirm that. So now you don't have to send documents to COOPS, the vice chancellors would log in and effect the transfer there, and they validate in real time.
As a way of managing that losing of time?
Yes.
Can a vice chancellor confirm whether that is the case, one who has experienced such a case? Where is the vice chancellor, can, yes, there is a mic behind you?
Your Excellency, my name is Professor Odeyambo Vice Chancellor, Mary University. I would like to confirm that that is true, you can now transfer online, and it's done in real time, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Why should the whole fee reflect instead of the household? Just hold on, Omar, I'm still answering your questions, just to Lisa Bolick. Omar is asking, why should the whole fee reflect? All he wants is the fee to reflect on what the household is supposed to contribute. I think initially, the letters that went out had the full fee, the cost of the course, and that is what brought a lot of confusion. The ministry then instructed, and I think the PS can speak to this, yes, PS?
Your Excellency, there had been a lot of confusion in terms of what the students contribute in terms of fees as compared to the actual cost of the programs. So we thought it was important to share this information, so that students can appreciate that a course like medicine, for example, is six hundred and twelve thousand, but the government is shouldering a portion of this cost of the program, and the households only pay a certain amount. But your Excellency, we've been in conversation, and when we realized that was a problem, we withdrew the letters, and we have released new letters that just indicate the amount for the household to contribute, thank you.
Thank you very much. I think initially, Omar, what the point was, you know, sometimes people don't appreciate where we're coming from. I think there, so there was an attempt to say, okay, this course costs so much, the government is going to pay so much, you're going to get loan of so much, and the household is going to pay so much. Unfortunately, many people misunderstood that and said, okay, the cost costs six hundred thousand, that's what I'm supposed to pay, and that's what brought confusion. So I think subsequently, the letters were withdrawn, and now it's only showing what the household is supposed to contribute. You have said about Nivasha, that there was a problem in Nivasha, that you guys were in Nivasha, and I think there were some agreements that maybe were misrepresented. I was not aware, I was briefed by the team that was in Nivasha. It was a place to explain, for students to appreciate. Do you want to say something as the team leader who was in Nivasha? These good guys are saying, you said what they did not agree.
Your Excellency, one of the issues they raised is that they wanted the MTI reviewed, and that's why we put in place the task force in which we have representatives from the High Education Loans Board, Universities Fund, vice chancellors, as well as lecturers with specialist expertise, and they have been working on that MTI. So one of the issues that should be very clear is that we do not usually use the raw scores. So if, for example, you have nine dependents, or five, or two, or three, all of these have a weight, and that weight is usually determined by a very random group. So HELP will put a group of students, lecturers, parents, members of the community, church, and they decide, how do you think this variable is important in determining the capacity of a family? And so these weights are then looked at scientifically, and in the end, all of these are put into a composite kind of variable that is determined with a mathematical model. And we have all of this, it will be published, so that all the stakeholders can look at it and tell us where they think this model can be improved. So that is some of the work that we started undertaking after the Nivasha retreat.
Thank you very much. So there was some input from Nivasha on how to take this forward. The other issue that has been, who decides how much it costs? This is, this is, these are empirical figures. It is not somebody from the blues who says this course costs so much. There is a calculation of the input into the course. The vice chancellors here are the, with the leadership of the universities, they know how to determine how much which course costs. Can one of the vice chancellors help me with how you arrive at the cost of a course? Professor Odeyambo, again?
Thank you very much. When a student comes to university, say to do medicine or engineering, look at a course like Introduction to Electronic Engineering, then you'll have to put a teacher that is going to teach that course, and you'll have to compute how much you are going to pay that teacher, maybe within forty-five or fifty hours. There will be a technologies, a technician, again, you'll pay that person. There will be the need of equipment that are going to be used. You'll have to cost to them. The students will go for practicum or practical, they'll go for industry experience, and the teachers will have to follow them, you have to cost all this. Of course, there are other things like the electricity and all the rest. Now, the sum total of this will inform you the course of running that course. And that is how we get now, for that engineering, perhaps there are fifteen units in a year or in a semester. So once you get all that, you have the total course, maybe it comes to two hundred and eighty, maybe it comes to six hundred and twelve, maybe it comes to, like, it is a financial mathematician who was there, maybe it comes to around two hundred and seventy-five thousand.
Realistic to it, that that is what it is. There is no benefit in assuming that this course costs so much, just by assumption. It has to be calculated, and it has to be determined scientifically. Cluster points for private and public universities, my small sister here, Karen, said that some of the cluster points for public universities are a bit high, so they, sometimes you end up in a private university, which, I don't know whether you applied for or you did not, maybe you did not apply for, and therefore, you end up in a situation where you pay, you are asked to pay more, because this is a private university, and there is no scholarship, all you can get is a loan. So how do we, how do we determine that? Do we have anybody from COOPS who can help me answer this question, or somebody knowledgeable around there? Nobody is there. I will, I will take it as homework. On, yes, maybe my PS there can help me?
Professor Ungendi is the chair of that cluster work at the COOPS, so he can speak to the cutoff points.
Thank you very much, your Excellency. Yes, I am the chair of placement committee at COOPS. And indeed, because of the way clustering is done, sometimes you might want, a student may want a course in one university, but they are not able to get it, because their cutoff points are lower. And that's why that question from the concerned, Lindy was, she's saying that maybe she got a C plus, but then she could not be able to get appropriate courses in public universities, because maybe most of those courses then, that she wanted, the cluster points were higher than what a cluster point was, and therefore, she ended up in a private university. But for private university, again, your Excellency, the student must have chosen to go to those universities. They are not just placed there, they, there's normally a box where you tick that maybe you don't get this course in public universities, you are also waiting to go to private universities. So there is always that choice. And I think again, if the person would really want to come to private, public universities, there are still courses that are available, that just require the the minimum university entry, but they may not be courses of, the prime courses that they wanted. But anybody wanting to go to public universities, and they have a C plus, your Excellency, they will not be denied, because the universities are there, there are programs that are led to take them, thank you.
Let me also tell Karen that CAREA is not the only parameter we use. So this Masai fellow with a hundred cows, and there is no provision for what is your tribe in the whole thing. So there is no place for Masai there. So the other parameters are there, which school did you go to, which primary school did you go to? You also registered under the education system, are both your parents alive? You know, there are so many other parameters that eventually determine the classification. So even though you may not have some of your details in CAREA, there are so other parameters that contribute to the binding. So I think that is what informs the whole setup. My friend Tarus has given us a classic example of dentistry. Dentistry is the most expensive course. I don't know why you chose the most expensive course. To make your point, this dentistry is a course that we have, universities have said it costs seven hundred and, seven hundred and, seven hundred and thirty-something thousand. So this is a course that is fairly expensive, because of all the reasons that we have been told by Professor Odeyambo there, the delivery of the course. And what are we going to do to make sure that we don't lock out children from vulnerable backgrounds from this course? We have to strike a balance between teaching the course at all, because we actually run the risk, Mr. Tarus. If we continue the way we are continuing, we run the risk of not teaching that course at all, or having a half-baked dentist, because we have made him to pass exams, and yet we haven't trained him enough. So that's a balance we have to strike, and you remember when we engaged, I told you, this is an area of improvement that we may consider. What about the expensive courses? How do we have a a ceiling on making sure that those in, coming from vulnerable backgrounds have a ceiling that does not exceed what they can pay? But let me also say the following, Mr. Tarus. You also know that students in band one get an upkeep of sixty thousand, up from fifty, fifty-two thousand. Students in band two get fifty-five thousand, fifty-five thousand as upkeep. We have also raised the upkeep for all the categories, because we also know that some of these students from these vulnerable backgrounds, they sometimes contribute to their own education, if they are, if they have sufficient, sufficient resources coming out of the, of the of the student upkeep. And these are some of the nuances that we have to, we have to think about. The trade-off we have to make is, do we conmodel that has put our universities under very severe strain and almost collapsed our education system, or do we improve it? That's the question we have to ask ourselves. Do we continue with a system that has the potential of collapsing all our universities, the vice chancellors, you've heard them say, or do we improve it? I would suggest respectfully that we improve it, and this is the way to improve it. And this conversation is part of what will inform how to improve it. And I want to encourage you as comrades, if I may, to be part of this improvement, to be part of these suggestions on how we are going to improve this system. Whether it is students doing medicine, as Tarus has said, or engineering or nursing, we must make sure that it improves, and make sure that our education does not suffer what it has suffered so far. Does the appeals work? You know, if you appeal, do you have a chance of ever getting it right? I know I have seen in the media sometimes cases of people who have asked that they were put in the wrong bands, but there are cases of some of those students who are put in the wrong bands, who have made their appeal, given the correct information, and they have been put in the correct band. Are there such cases, for example, in this hall? If we have any who may want to say their bit who are in this hall? Because I remember there was Josiah from Kissi, and he made a very passionate. Are you Josiah? Okay, you wanted to say, just hold your horse. Or do we have any other student who, who made an application and was given a chance to appeal? Yes, my friend, are you among those who appealed? Yes, okay, give him the mic, let's hear what his story was.
So when he applied, he came to band three. He can find your appeal, he can go to band two.
When, what was the issue, for example? Did you, why you told what the issue was?
I wasn't told, so it will go to, to.
To reapply? And you reapplied? Who, initially, how had you applied? Who had applied for you?
I applied through the cyber and I filled out the details correctly. And then during the appeal, you have to write another, a better reason as to why you're appealing.
And then you were reconsidered?
Yeah, I was reconsidered and placed in band two.
So how long did it take?
A week.
A week? One week? Okay. There are some other people who have applied. There are others who have taken in some of our suggestions, and we have seen them progress. Now, good people, I am told it is ten PM, ten-ten. And we had time up to nine, what was our cut of time? Nine fifteen, so we are an hour late. So let me conclude by saying the following. But I have listened very carefully to... Yes, my friend, you have something to say? Give him the mic.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, for giving this opportunity to talk. So my question was about my institution there at Tuk. So when you were coming to launch the S block at the Technical University of Kenya, you told us that there was land that is behind the Kenya Poly, that is the Technical University of Kenya. You told us that that land belongs to us, and nowadays I see that land is used as a parking space by some people we don't even understand. So kindly can you clarify how that land went? Because we will occupy that land as from tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Vice Chancellor, I think we have the Vice Chancellor of Tuk here. Can you confirm what the situation is with that piece, Vice Chancellor?
Thank you, Your Excellency. Vice Chancellor from Technical University of Kenya. Your Excellency, you gave us that land, and we have been following the due process to get the documentation. I told my students not to occupy the land because we need to have the title deed so that we do the right thing. And I want to appreciate that, Your Excellency, my student led by my president, Uziah Alex. We've been talking to them. It's true, they said team that made a fence and they started parking there. And the students said that the president said this is our land. And we have written letters even to your office through the head of public service to that effect, and we are waiting to get the response. So kindly don't occupy, we are going to get the title deed so that we do it right.
Where is the CS for education? Is Machogu, my friend just... Is my friend Julius here? Julius, you have an assignment. Please make sure that you talk with your colleague at the Ministry of Lands to make sure that that piece of land is, justice is done and that my good friend doesn't have to go to occupy. And we can give them the title, and not just the title. We can actually, using our housing fund facility, we can help them put up some hostels if that is what the university want. So I am sorry that we have to call it a day because it is... Okay, let me end with this girl. She has really, she has really put up a strong case.
All protocols observed. It is a great event. My name is Honorable Sang Linda Chapkoye from the Strathmore School. And, Mr. President, I must put down my book to say something. It has always been my dream to meet the president. And today I've met you, but keep quiet, I don't say something, yeah? Mr. President, when you entered this hall, I was watching your steps. And when we came in here, we could see there are seats that are white. You've worn, beginning from your coat, you've worn white, and at the end, it's white. So from far, starting point and to the end, you are wearing all white. Mr. President, it means peace. Please, look into this new funding model. Mr. President, look into it, three times look into it, and ensure it favors everyone. Most of us here are from vulnerable backgrounds. We are just in some schools because of purposes and because of our mouths. Mr. President, look into it, please, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, my dear, thank you. So I think let us, let's leave it there. I know, I know the ladies want to say something, but because of time, what maybe we could agree, we could agree on a way forward. And let me suggest one. That this has been a very healthy conversation. I must say that you have enriched my thinking. You have given ideas that give a suggestion on the way forward. I value every suggestion that has been made here. Many people here have given suggestions on how we can make it better. My good friend Junior here said that let us improve on what has been there, make it better so that our universities can move forward and all the students can look at their model positively. You have said that there are sudden reconsiderations that have to be made. We have all the vice chancellors here, majority of them. We have my staff from the Ministry of Education. We have people from High Education Loans Board. We will take into account the issues you have raised. Beyond the funding model, you have told me about matters to do with fighting corruption. You have told me about how we create better representation for students in our universities. You have told me about all the other issues. They are very important issues to me, and I will look into those issues. Let me propose a round of applause for all those who gave wonderful suggestions to Abigail Macoffin. And to all the good guys who attended this, and forgive me those who did not have a chance to speak. I will make another occasion available for us to be able to engage on this model again. Asante sana, I wish you well. Take my greetings to your comrades and colleagues in your universities, and I wish you well and see you soon. Asante sana.
Why don't we put our hands together for His Excellency? Please, let's give him a round of applause. That's almost quite a number of hours right there, Your Excellency. Thank you very much. I'll request that now we be upstanding as we allow His Excellency to exit. But I'll request all students, please maintain your position. Please remain where you are, even after His Excellency has exited. And a round of applause for His Excellency.